We ask for the courtesy of the board, members, staff, and those who are participating telephonically that you please silence your cellphones. Good evening and welcome to the Orange County School Board's regular meeting scheduled for Tuesday, January 16th, 2024. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Board members are in attendance. Chair Teresa Jacobs and Dr. Karen Castro-Dentel could not be with us today. As a reminder, board members will not be engaging in outside electronic or digital communication during the meeting so that we can focus on the matters immediately before us. To my fellow board members, district staff, and members of the public when speaking, please make sure your microphone is turned on and speak directly into it so our YouTube and Orange TV viewers can hear you clearly. Again, thank you so much for participating in or attending tonight's meeting. Now, we're going to have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening again, and thank you for joining us for tonight's school board meeting. We have some special recognitions that I am proud to share with you before our order of business. Each month, a school board member honors an exceptional employee in their district. These employees have shown dedication and contributed to the success of our students. We are grateful for every one of our hardworking staff members, and this is one more way we are pleased to honor them. I'd like to invite Member Felder, who represents District 5, to tell us about the OCPS staff member she has selected for her school board spotlight. Vicki?
Thank you, Vice Chair Gallo, and good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. I'm honored to recognize Jones High School Band Director Naomi Joy Nelson. It is indeed a joy for me to offer this opportunity for you, Ms. Nelson. She has worked for OCPS for more than 15 years. Naomi Joy is a Jones High alumna, and this year she made history as the school's first female band director. Yeah? Girl power, yes, sir. As a Jones High School student, Naomi played the alto saxophone and was the band's drum major from 10th to 12th grade. Today, she is a trailblazer who is dedicated, enthusiastic, and resilient, and isn't resilient, excuse me, resilient and isn't afraid of breaking barriers for students to grow, learn, and reach their potential. Naomi has inspired her students to strive for and achieve musical excellence. She has also tapped into the Tiger Alumni Network involving band alumni, which I am a part of, that, in today's band program. She is helping lead the storied Jones High Band to reach new heights, and that's why I'm so proud to recognize her tonight. Are there any Jones High Alumni Band members in the audience? If you are, rave, yeah, thank you, thank you. Naomi, thank you for all that you do to support our students musically and otherwise.
Congratulations, Naomi, and thank you for being a role model and musical force in each of your students' lives. Now, we're going to take a picture.
Yes, and I need to present.
So...
You can go down there, honey. We'll stand up here.
Is the principal here? Thank you so much. All right, now, we're gonna get a picture.
Yes.
Come on down. Go ahead, bud. Principal Orlando Norwood?
She's got the green tie.
Can you get through, honey? Oh, she is? Okay.
We get so jealous of such talent.
Are we gonna do the... Do you want to do the song first, or do you want to do the photo op first?
I know.
We've had a lot of talent around here.
Okay.
Okay.
So nice talent.
Let's sit in, enjoy. We really, it's beautiful.
Beautiful song.
Scott needs to sign her up for next holiday.
Thank you, guys.
Talent, like showcasing talent. Oh, she does look beautiful. It's awesome.
Yes, she's... She plays and sings.
I heard her practicing early.
Soprano sax.
Oh!
Resides!
Where the talent resides.
Oh, fabulous.
I would present you with this token of our appreciation and our love and affection Yes, ma'am, yes. for you, Naomi Joy. You have been a joy to the Jones High School family, and we're so grateful. OCPS, they have a knack for seeking out good talent. They have the ability to especially provide great talent, and we are so thankful that you allowed us to choose you. And she's also a former rattler, too.
Oh, woohoo! It's a triple threat. Next, I would like to acknowledge two sisters who are both Olympia High juniors, Maya and Vida Sri Kuntan, for receiving the Congressional Award Gold Medal. The gold medal is the highest Congressional Award youth can receive. The accolade was established by Congress more than 40 years ago to recognize the initiative, service, and achievements of young people. The Congressional Award also provides opportunities for youth to unleash their potential by achieving personal goals focused on volunteerism, character development, and fitness. In order to achieve this award, each of the girls had two complete requirements in four key areas, including voluntary, public service, personal development, physical fitness, and exploration. Maya and Vida each have completed more than 400 public service hours, spent 200 hours on personal development in the area of musical performance (we have more talent in the audience today), and completed 200 hours of physical fitness and explored India during a five-day trip. In October, Congressman Maxwell Frost presented Maya and Vida with their Congressional Award Gold Medals. Congratulations. That's quite an honor. We're so very proud of you. If we can get you guys up for a picture, please?
Congratulations.
Good job, ladies.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We are proud that you've earned this honor for all the time that you've devoted to public service. We look forward to your continued success. Was the principal here? We didn't see her, right?
She wasn't able to make it.
Oh, wonderful, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we didn't not include her in the picture. Last but not least, I would like to recognize student athletes from Boone, East River, Lake Buena Vista, Timber Creek, Windermere, and Winter Park Schools. They gave me the mic tonight. I'm just kidding, I'm very proud of all the schools, except the ones in Memertown. I'm joking. Don't come at me. Winter Park High Schools for winning state championships in sports, including bowling, diving, swimming, and ES Sports. Please welcome Lonnie Flores, there he is, District Senior Administrator of Athletics and Wellness Services, who will shine a spotlight on our top fall 2023 student athletes.
Good evening, Vice Chair Gallo, board members, and Dr. Vasquez. Thank you for having me and giving me this opportunity to highlight our student athletes. I think you'll be impressed with how we did this year. We have three teams, as you were in this fall season. We have three teams and nine individuals we're gonna recognize today. The first team, and again, this has been multiple semesters, is an academic team champion for the state of Florida, Lake Buena Vista Girls Swimming. Lake Buena Vista Girls Swimming Team was named the state 2A Academic Champions with a grade, a team grade point average of 3.743. There was, there was, they were first of only 13 other schools in the state of Florida in this classification who had a combined GPA of at least a 3.0. At this time, I would like to recognize the coaches and staff from Lake Buena Vista High School. Head Coach Mike Bullock, Assistant Coach Krista Sickles, Assistant Coach Christina Pino, Principal Guy Swenson, and Athletic Director Lauren Bradley. At this time, the coach would like to recognize their team.
Thank you. We have Vlad Dugat, Alexa Flut, Natalia Gutierrez, Victoria Gutierrez, who is a senior planning to attend UCF and minor or major in computer science and minor in music, Camila Melendez, who plans to attend UCF or UF and major in mechanical engineering, Valeria Perez, Adeline Phillips, Juliette Sous, Elia Sternman, who plans to finish her AA at Valencia, then enroll at UCF to major in graphic design, and Kendall Vong.
That's wonderful. Good evening. My name is Lauren Bradley. I'm the athletic director, and I would just like to congratulate our team. Not many people know, but these young ladies devote a lot of time. They practice at 5:00 a.m. every morning, and they are committed to excellence in the classroom and in the pool and do a tremendous job balancing athletics and academics.
Thank you so much. Ladies, can you stand up? You can be recognized, and we can clap for you. Are we gonna do, are we doing pictures individually or at the end, Frank?
Your call. You're the boss.
Let's, okay, let's do them individually.
Yes.
Of course.
Come on, we're gonna do a picture.
You ladies can come up and grab a photo.
I think it's easier to do them individually.
Congratulations.
Do you want, you guys might need one, you want to just move over, Frank? Yes, lie down. Remember for us, slide down slightly. Yeah, that'll be...
Well, let's have all the kids in the middle and the adults on a little bit more toward the outside. Stay in your lane. Keep going, don't be scared.
Yeah, keep going, yeah, you're good, yeah, keep going a little bit. We're trying to get everyone...
There we go, good. Look toward me, nice big smile. Look happy, and on three, good, one, two, and three, stay there, hold on, one more, look happy, good, one, two, and three. Did you get it? You sure? Look at us, look at our big smile. Hope we got another parent.
That's right. We are the...
That's right.
Thank you, ladies.
Yay!
Congratulations. So, out the door, did I actually have a backpack or something? Yeah, you can grab it.
Thank you and congratulations. That's wonderful.
Ladies, the next group I'd like to honor, and first, I'd like to say thanks to our program coordinator, Steve McHale. This is our first year, OCPS leading the way with our inaugural year of esports. Timber Creek High School has brought home our first-ever state esports championship.
Mr. Flores, for those of us who aren't familiar, can you explain what esports might be? And for the home audience?
Esports is a gaming platform and competitive nature where we play multiple schools and teams in many different games and platforms, from Nintendo to PC. So there's many different catalogs and opportunities. This opens up a whole new avenue for our students in OCPS.
Wow, that's awesome. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This is the inaugural year for Timber Creek Sports High School Esports, and it was a strong success. Heading into the first-place standings in the playoffs, the team represented teamwork, communication, and unique skills by bringing home the school a state championship in one of the most popular video games in the world. This is Coach John Franco's first state championship in esports. At this time, I would like to recognize the staff and coaches for esports at Timber Creek High School. John Franco's is the head coach, the principal is Mark Wasco, and the athletic director is Jim Priest. At this time, I would like Coach John Franco to introduce his team.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, thank you for the definition and explaining about esports. The esports community has been around for quite some time, including this multi-billion-dollar industry on this video game that these gentlemen have played in, from a video game called Mario Kart that's been around since 2014. Okay? I'm honored to represent Timber Creek Esports in this inaugural year, with, of course, the continued support of Director McHale, Principal Mark Wasco, and Athletic Director Jim Priest. I also wanted to thank the parents who took the time through the careers of these young men to help with playing the game from long nights in the last 10 years, when these gentlemen were supposed to be eating dinner instead of playing a video game. Also investing in computer systems and gaming and updates through the last 10 years, involved with these gentlemen's time while playing games. You never knew what it's gonna lead toward, and it led toward a state championship for the, one of the best schools in the state. So, congratulations, young men. I'm very proud of you, and I'm honored to be considered your coach in this very first inaugural, and I'm humbled to be able to call you coach. So, thank you for your support. All right, so, gentlemen, let me call it and call your name, and here we go. Carlin Abernathy, 10th grade. Ethan Craker, 10th grade. Juan Pablo Wernamerez, 10th grade. Ian Alvarez, I'm sorry, Alveles, 10th grade. And our senior in the group, Gabriel Lira, who's gonna be, who was accepted to the UCF, to UCF, and is gonna go into the STEM career, so go Knights.
Wonderful. If y'all could join us up here for a photo op, that'd be great. Congratulations. That's wonderful.
Those make, those are the gaming things, a lot of that.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. That's awesome. You're welcome, thank you.
Sorry, I missed the game. What, what were you competing? Yeah, but which? Mario Kart.
Thank you. Thank you. That's wonderful.
Mario Kart.
It's the driving.
Oh.
Does that mean y'all are really good drivers, like on the road?
Good, good, good. Look toward me, look happy, hold on, stay there, one more, super happy. Is that your happy face? All right, good. Excellent happiness.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you, Mr. Wasco. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we'll be driving cars and designing.
That was great. Congratulations once again. Go Timber Creek!
Ladies, it's been an honor to represent our first team, which was academic, our second team that was esports, and our third team, the overall state champion, East River Girls Bowling. East River Girls Bowling Team claimed the FHSA State 1A Championship, giving East River its first state championship in school history. The team had an undefeated regular season, going 20-0, and they were also the Metro East and District Team Champions for the 2023-2024 school year. The team won the state title by defeating Pinellas Park 3-0 in the state semifinals and Space Coast 3-1 in the finals. This is Coach Tom Tagi's first state championship in bowling. At this time, I would like to recognize the school's staff and the coaches for East River High School. Head Coach Tom Tagi, Assistant Coach Jason Belcher, Principal Becky Watson, and Athletic Director Brittany Scott. At this time, I'd like Coach to get the opportunity to introduce his players.
Thank you very much, very excited. My name's Tom Tagi. I've been at East River since it opened up 15 years ago, so to see the school's first team championship is awesome for me. These girls are a great group of girls. They came together and won a state championship, and when I went back and looked at the history of the bowling state tournament, these girls did it in a fashion that hadn't been done by any other school. We lost one, you mentioned we lost one game in the finals, was the only game we lost the entire tournament. These girls dominated from the beginning of the season to the district tournament, Metro Conference, state tournament. They just, they really did a great job, super proud of them, and very excited because we only have one senior, so we're looking to be back here next year as repeat champions. I would like to thank our coaches, Coach Belcher, Coach Belcher and I have been coaching together for quite a few years, Steve Poole, Steve's been with us for a lot of years, his daughter bowled with us as well, Larry Tonga, who's not, wasn't able to be here tonight. These guys helped us out every day, and it was, it was an awesome season. So, our girls, our first is one of our freshmen, Emmylou Malina. Another freshman, Larry L. Tharps. Then we have a sophomore, Jada Videl. Another sophomore, Camden Nielsen. Our junior, Isis Reyes. And our lone senior is Emily Rusnick. Emily, next year, she's already started her AA, she's going to finish that at Valencia, transfer over to UCF pre-med, become a dentist, and I'm sure she'll be just as successful with that as she is with bowling. So, very excited for this group of girls to, again, 15 years, we've been waiting for a team state championship, and these girls brought it home. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. That's awesome. Come on up, we're gonna get some pictures.
Yes.
They do have cool shirts.
They're like bowling balls.
My daughter bowled when she was a senior East River, but there was no championships won.
Love your shirts.
Congratulations. There's a lot of money and scholarships for bowling, I hear. That's awesome, congratulations.
Stand by me.
Gotta go home and ask your daughter.
That's great. Bowling team, you're good, you're fine.
Look toward me, don't look at the tourists with the cellphones yet. Hold on. Now you can look at the tourists.
He's so crazy.
Good. You guys can share with your eyes. Good. All right, give me your best bowling pose, go. Three, two, there is one.
They got the chip, it gets underhand.
It ain't a ball. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Ladies, it is my honor now to recognize our individual state champion students, as I call your name if you'll stand up. Ryan Ersmann from Windermere High School is the Class 4A 200 Freestyle and 500 Freestyle State Champion, as well as a member of the 200 Freestyle State Championship Relay Team.
Which one is it?
Ryan, not here, okay. Walter Kefer. He is the Class 4A 50 Freestyle State Champion, as well as a 200 Freestyle Relay State Champion. Addison Reese. She is the 4A 100 Fly State Champion, as well as a 200 Freestyle Relay State Champion. Lawson Seaword and Roberto Zarate are members of the 4A 200 Freestyle State Championship Relay Team. Lastly in this group is Aiden Reese, Hollis Stokes, and Brooke Larwath. They are members of the Class 4A 200 Freestyle State Championship Relay Team.
Congratulations. Congratulations, that's fabulous.
The girls' swimming team at Windermere High School finished as a Class 4A Overall Team Runner-Up, as well as a state of Florida overall academic team runner-up.
Wow.
At this time, I would like to recognize the staff and the coaches for Windermere Swimming. Head Coach Kyle Goller. Assistant Coach Grace Conan. Principal Andy Levtekis. And Athletic Director Julian Sutton. At this time, Coach Goller, if you'd like to introduce the students and their grade.
All right, so, Ryan Ersmann is in 11th grade. He is absent this evening. Walter Kefer is in 11th grade. Brooke Larwath is in 12th grade, and her future plans will be swimming at Arizona State next year. Addison Reese, also in 12th grade, will be swimming at the University of Florida next year. Her younger sister, Aiden, is in 9th grade. Lawson Seaword is a senior and has aspirations to attend the University of Georgia next year. Hollis Stokes and Roberto Zarate are also juniors in high school as well.
Which one is it?
Ryan? Not here. Okay. Walter Kefer. He is the Class 4A 50 Freestyle State Champion, as well as a 200 Freestyle Relay State Champion. Addison Reese. She is the 4A 100 Fly State Champion, as well as a 200 Freestyle Relay State Champion. Lawson Seaword and Roberto Zarate. Are members of the 4A 200 Freestyle State Championship Relay Team. Lastly in this group is Aiden Reese, Hollis Stokes, and Brooke Larith. They are members of the Class 4A 200 Freestyles State Championship Relay Team.
Congratulations. Congratulations. That's fabulous.
The girls' swimming team at Windermere High School finished as a Class 4A Overall Team Runner-Up, as well as a State of Florida Overall Academic Team Runner-Up.
Wow.
At this time, I would like to recognize the staff and the coaches for Windermere Swimming. Head Coach Kyle Goller. Assistant Coach Grace Conan. Principal Andy Levtekis. And Athletic Director Julian Sutton. At this time, Coach Goller, if you'd like to introduce the students and their grade.
Sorry, guys. All right, so Ryan Ersmann is in 11th grade. He is absent this evening. Walter Kiefer is in 11th grade. Brooke Larith is in 12th grade, and her future plans will be swimming at Arizona State next year. Addison Reese, also in 12th grade, will be swimming at the University of Florida next year. Her younger sister, Aiden, is in 9th grade. Lawson Seaword is a senior and has aspirations to attend the University of Georgia next year. Hollis Stokes and Roberto Zarate are also juniors in high school as well.
Picture? Yep.
Congratulations.
That's wonderful. Great job. Frank, wait one minute.
That's so cute.
Yeah.
Levtekis.
Yeah, show off your shirt.
We love her.
Good. Look forward to me. Look happy. Stay there. Hold on. One more. Look super happy. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Job well done.
Come back. Come back. Parents. Come on, parents.
Parents?
Come on, parents.
Oh, yeah.
I'll share with you. Make sure you smile. Whose parent is this?
Good job. Congratulations.
Ladies, our last individual is Winter Park Swimming, Adriana Lujetsky. She is the Class 4A 50 Freestyle State Champion. She was also the 100-yard freestyle runner-up, third team overall at the all-state championships. She achieved automatic individual All-American time standards for the 50 and 100 freestyles. Currently looking at LSU, FSU, Iowa, and Indiana for next school year. Brooke, she broke two Winter Park High School records, the 50 freestyle that was in existence for three years, and the 100-yard freestyle that was in existence for 26 years.
Wow. Congratulations.
At this time, I would like to honor the staff and the coaches for Winter Park High School Swimming. Head Coach, that's not able to be here today, is Joe Hour. Assistant Coach, Kim Burke. Principal, Matt Arnold. And the Athletic Director, Andy Childs. At this time, Coach Kyle Goller for Winter Park would like to introduce Adriana to the board.
Yeah, so, yes, this is Adriana Lujetsky. As has been mentioned before, she is a senior at Winter Park. She is currently looking at Indiana, FSU, Indiana, and Iowa, as schools said she would like to swim in college. Adriana Lujetsky.
Thank you. Come on up. All those schools are a great choice. I'm going to have to throw a little something down for FSU. Before, you know. You're taking recommendations.
Good job.
Angie loves to drive.
I'm heading there tonight?
She loves that big girl.
That's awesome.
That's awesome.
That's great.
Good. Look happy. Look forward to me. Hold on. Is that mom? Yay, mom.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. That's wonderful.
Ladies, I cannot thank you enough for your tremendous support of athletics. All that you do means so much to our student athletes, our coaches, and our athletics department. I couldn't figure out how to end this last year, so I'm going to stop by and get a fist bump on the way out. Thank you.
That's wonderful.
That's a great way to end.
Thank you so much, Ron.
You did so much.
Thank you. Thank you for all that you do. Participating in sports helps our students by increasing their decision-making, problem-solving, and social skills, and can contribute to academic success. Thank you, Lonnie, and congratulations to all of our students, athletes. Job well done. Dr. Vasquez, do we have any newly appointed administrators to present tonight?
Yes, we do. I would like to start by introducing Mr. Jeff Aldridge. Jeff has been a principal for a number of years, but he is going to have the opportunity to be the principal of the new middle school, Site 129, out in the, on the east side of town. So, Jeff, congratulations.
Thank you, school board members, Superintendent Vasquez, and staff, for the opportunity to serve at the new Lake Nona Area Relief Middle School. With experience opening a couple of schools as a teacher, I've always dreamed of the opportunity to open a school as an administrator, and I'm so excited for this chance. I want to thank my Discovery Middle School family, students, and staff for allowing me to serve alongside them the last couple of years, and I know they will continue to shine. I'm looking forward to becoming involved in the Lake Nona community, and I'm so excited to meet our future students and get to work building an amazing team of educators to support them. I also want to thank my wife, Carrie, who is watching right now, for her encouragement and unwavering support through this process, and just thank you again. I'm excited for this opportunity.
We will miss you in District 1. But you'll do fabulous things in District 2.
District 2 is excited to have you. Welcome.
You'll be fabulous. Congratulations. Seriously.
Oh, my goodness. This is so much fun. Next, I would like to introduce the new principal of Site 47, which is the new elementary school out on the west side of town that will be Relieving Water Spring Elementary, and that is Matthew Hendricks, who's currently the principal there. Congratulations, Matthew.
Hey. Good evening, school board, Superintendent Vasquez. Very happy to be continued support in District 4. We've done some great work since 2019, opening up Water Spring Elementary. When opportunity rose to continue to support that community, I felt it was best for me to go to the unknown for my community. My school is kind of being cut in half. So, I'll be over there at the new building, continue the work we've been doing in District 4, and I'm excited for the future.
Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to introduce Carrie Marie Mannion, who is a resource teacher at Edgewater High School and is the new assistant principal at Colonial High School.
Thank you, Superintendent Vasquez, school board members, and staff, for this opportunity to serve Colonial High School. I would also like to thank Mrs. Russo for believing in me. I feel privileged to learn under you. The Colonial team has already been very supportive and a loving family. There are several leaders of OCPS that have supported me in my career here. Dr. Kreider, Dr. Bailey, Dina Tolbert, Mrs. Aponte, and Kristen Angel. My gratitude and appreciation for your support is everlasting. My family, sorry, going to get a little emotional. My children supported me. I started my school, my career, it was a second career. My children watched their mom, waitress, and go to school. Teach and still waitress, go back to school, go back to school. They loved and supported me all the way through it. So, thank you to my four children, their spouses, and I love each and every one of you.
Congratulations.
Oh, sorry. One more thing. No, 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 before I forget. It's great to be a grenadier.
Okay, there you go.
Yes, can't forget that. That would be a problem. And last but certainly not least, it is my honor to present to you Marquise McMiller, who is our new Senior Director for Governmental Relations, and he has quite an impressive resume. But what I would like to point out is that he was, a few years back, a teacher at Jones High School. So, we're so happy you've come back home.
That's awesome.
Saw a man of brief words to Superintendent Dr. Vasquez, to the board. Thank you for the appointment. I look forward to working with the OCPS family, to work with our elected officials, both state, local, and federal, to get the work of the business, work in the business of the district done. Thank you for the opportunity.
Congratulations. We'd like to call everybody up now at this time to take a picture, please. Teachers Association, to the podium.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Vasquez. I'm thrilled to provide some exciting updates from CTA that showcases our commitment to the values we hold dear. This past weekend, CTA once again participated in the MLK Parade to celebrate the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. Dr. King passionately advocated for unionism, and in 1961 spoke before the AFL-CIO, of which CTA is a part, to explain why he felt unions were essential to civil rights progress, saying, "Our needs are identical with labor needs: decent wages, fair working conditions, livable housing, old age security, health and welfare measures, conditions in which families can grow, have education for their children, and respect in the community." Saturday, CTA joined our brothers, sisters, and siblings from the Central Florida AFL-CIO, including Lacla, ATU, IU-PAT, CBTU, and Central Florida Jobs with Justice. I also wanted to share that several years ago, the CTA Minority Affairs and Human and Civil Rights Committees created a Black History Art Contest for students at all grade levels, and there's still time for students to submit their work. The deadline is January 26, and there's $300 in prizes available. Our union is proud to stand up for truth and education, and we believe Black History is a critical part of our collective history. And as Georgia O'Keeffe once said, "I found I could say things with color and shapes that I couldn't say any other way, things I had no words for." Another item I wanted to share is that in our ongoing commitment to professional growth, we've been expanding our free professional development this year. We've offered several courses with assistance from our national affiliate, the American Federation of Teachers, and have just added a 12-hour UDL course called Everyone Learns Differently. Thank you, Dr. Vasquez, for agreeing to cover a TDY day for this course. I'm excited our union is able to offer these important courses that help our teachers to continue to grow. Last, I wanted to remind any teachers here or who are listening from home about the CTA Howard Fenner Scholarship Application. I shared last year that, to this date, CTA has given out over $1 million in scholarship money to high school seniors in Central Florida. A small amount of our CTA dues each year is used to fund these scholarships. Thank you to our members for all the ways that you support our youth and our community in Central Florida. The deadline for this scholarship is March 11. CTA remains dedicated to our mission of supporting teachers, students, and our entire community. While various opinions may circulate about unions, this commitment defines the essence of who we truly are. Thank you.
Thank you, Clint. Next, I would like to call Ron Pollard, President of the Orange Education Support Professionals Associations, to the podium. Good evening, Ron.
Wow, I got to follow that? Good evening to our school board, Superintendent Vasquez. As the sole representative of, that supports employees of Orange County Public Schools, I just want to take the opportunity to recognize the awesome people who have chosen to work for OCPS. We didn't do the downtown parade, but OESPA was at the oldest black municipality, Edenville, in the parade. So, we celebrated there. We also trying to carry on the work of Dr. Martin Luther King. My granddaughter says to me, "You're a lot like Dr. King." And I said, "Why?" She say, "Because you fight for the garbage man." So, if that's the way she says, she's eight years old. She's made a connection there. With all the many challenges we're facing as a union this year, our focus is still the same, and that's student success. So, we're thanking God for a great new year, and for you all too. Thank you.
Next, I would like to call on Guy Swinson, Representative for the Orange County Association of School Administrators.
Good evening, Vice Chair Gallo, Board Member, Superintendent Vasquez. My name is Guy Swinson, President-elect, OCASA, and I represent 320 school-based principals and assistant principals. Our members want to extend our most sincere thank you and appreciation to the board and the superintendent for our recent salary increases, which show your continued commitment to providing salaries that are commensurate with the responsibilities we are tasked with at our school sites. This school year, many of our schools have had visits from cabinet members and board members, and we have been able to show off the great work done by our teams, but this has also been an opportunity to discuss combinations, issues, and concerns. What you may not see during those visits are all the behind-the-scenes activities needed to keep a campus safe. This is what I would like to share with you tonight. Do you know that administrators arrive on duty as early as 6:00 a.m. for our high schools, and they stay as late as 6:00 p.m. for our middle schools sometimes while waiting for the second round of buses? These hours do not include any after-school events, which middle and high schools often run seven days a week. We check for locked doors, monitor gates, cameras, pilot walkthrough metal detectors. We check bathrooms for students who are, well, not using the bathroom for its intended purpose. We work with guidance counselors, social workers, safe coordinators, attendance deans, and parole officers. We get called to classrooms. We respond to social media threats, confiscate cell phones and headphones, investigate Title IX cases, conduct monthly fire drills, severe weather drills, and lockdown drills we call DCF. We respond to students with suicidal ideation. We make home visits, prevent fights and breakup fights, and sometimes we sustain an injury while doing so. While all of that is happening, we are monitoring and reacting to gaggle alerts, raptor alerts. We hold monthly threat assessment meetings, intruency meetings, reentry meetings after a student has been arrested, complete and submit, upload and download mounds and mounds of paperwork, Google Forms and Smart Sheets. We monitor safer corner signage, inspect fire extinguishers, prepare for fire inspections, create and update safe school plans, and are aware of the location of all duress buttons and AED machines on our campus. And when the Safe School Office from the state of Florida does a surprise visit, we need to have everything I've mentioned at our fingertips memorized. And I could go on, but I only have three minutes. I want to conclude my time with you today by mentioning the principal of Perry High School in Iowa, who died recently as a result of keeping his students safe. His name is Dan Marburger, and it is important to speak his name. And I would like to honor him and the student that lost his life for a brief moment of Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, I will call on Dr. Vasquez to introduce Lake Buena Vista High School students from her superintendent's Student Advisory Council.
Thank you. It is my honor to present two students from Lake Buena Vista High School, Brian Stockwell and Mira Patel, who will speak to us about their efforts this year at Lake Buena Vista.
Good evening. My name is Mira Patel, and I'm the Student Body President at Lake Buena Vista High School.
And my name is Brian Stockwell, and I'm the Senior Class Treasurer.
To continue to promote the interconnectedness at our school, we decided on a Pay It Forward campaign, which enabled students to spread kindness and interact with people who they normally wouldn't talk to. This campaign had the aim of uniting our school and students.
Everybody knows what random acts of kindness are, so our goal was to implement these acts of kindness in a fun and engaging way. To start, we have 500 rubber bracelets that are dispersed during both A and B lunches. Since most students won't know what to do with these bracelets, we made a card that explains what the bracelets are for. The card is translated in both English and Spanish. The main goal of these bracelets is to push students to spread random acts of kindness. Once they have, for example, held the door for someone, they give the bracelet and the card to the person they did the act of kindness to. Now, that student has to do an act of kindness for someone else. In this way, we will be creating a chain reaction of kindness throughout our students, and they will be able to pay it forward.
To reach a larger audience, along with the card attached to the bracelet, we have we have made posters and Instagram posts informing the students of the rules regarding the Pay It Forward campaign.
As a second part of our campaign, we were planning to have kindness chains. A student can write down a random act of kindness that they performed for someone on a slip of paper, and we will attach all these papers to a huge chain that will be hung up in our cafeteria, showing the kindness that is found throughout our school. We will also have a poster with ideas for random acts of kindness that students can perform if they need ideas.
Diversity could be stated as one of the most important factors in a school. In an environment where multiple ethnicities, races, and religions come together, it is vital to create a hospitable environment for all students and teachers.
We have already been finding ways to value the diversity of our students and make them feel more comfortable. At last year's prom, which took place during the month of Ramadan, for our Muslim students, we gave them a designated prayer room, so when it was time for them to pray, they had somewhere to go. Many of the students came to us afterwards, telling us how our gesture was appreciated, and they felt valued as students from different backgrounds.
Through the Superintendent Advisory Council meetings, it was shown to us that some schools do not have the student-teacher relationships that are so vital to a school. After observing this, we have created events and programs designed to strengthen teacher morale, creating a better environment for teaching. One example of this is the kindness notes that the student government places on each teacher's door every semester, saying quotes like "You are awesome," or "Thank you for everything." Realizing that teachers are just as human and important as the rest of us, little gestures like this, along with the holiday treats that the student body bakes for them, no doubt creates a better environment for everyone.
Now, to promote kindness outside of our school, we have brought some bracelets with us and urge you guys as well to spread kindness with your communities.
Thank you.
Great job. Yes, let's get a picture.
Great job.
Let's hold up our little...
Hold up our little... A little bracelet.
I like the idea of the children in the bathroom doing other things.
All these dads, come on.
There we go.
Thank you. Thank you so much. OCPS will be proclaiming January 22nd through the 26th, 2024, as "Celebrate Literacy in Orange County Public Schools." Dr. Vasquez, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have one item, 15.02, that we are retrieving from the agenda. It's requesting the approval of the real estate purchase agreement by and between the School Board of Orange County and Moss Park Properties. It's Site 97. We hope to bring it back at a later date.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. I find calls to amend the agenda as requested. Therefore, I will entertain a motion to amend the agenda as requested by the Superintendent. Move by Member Byrd, I need a second. Second by Member Felder. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. In order to provide governmental transparency as well as reasonable opportunities for the public to access and participate in the election or decision-making process, there are various methods by which the public can provide input to the School Board on an agenda item. Those include coming to speak to the School Board in person and via email in advance of the meeting. These methods are all published on the district's website and in Board docs. Mrs. Invall, do we have anybody that wishes to address the Board this evening? Wonderful, thank you so much. I will entertain, since there's no speakers, a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Member Frat makes the motion, I need a second. Second by Member Gould. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I was looking at Member Gould, and I was thinking Member Byrd. And that's why there was that long pause. I know. Next, we will hear from Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to make my comments brief, as I know several of you are traveling to Tallahassee. And so just a couple of items. First, I want to acknowledge that today we approved a grant that we received to continue our sustainability efforts with buses. And so we are thrilled for the work the transportation team, as well as our legislative team that worked with Darren Soto and Congressman Frost in helping us acquire these additional funds. We are thrilled and excited as to what this is going to mean to our community. Next, I'd like to give you an update on the inclusive restrooms. As I've previously shared, for any of our new schools, we have revised the designs of the new prototypes that will include more unisex stall restrooms. For existing schools, we've completed the review of all of the high school campuses to identify existing single-stall unisex restrooms and other single-stall gender-specific restrooms that can be converted. We are beginning with two of our high schools and have begun the conversations with the school in order to be able to convert specific restrooms to unisex restrooms. And the two schools are Apopka High School and Lake Buena Vista High School. And we hope that we will be able to begin work within the next few weeks. And then we will evaluate how that process went. And then we hope to continue that throughout the rest of the high schools in our district. And that is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. Mrs. Invall?
I have two short things. On your consent agenda today, you just appointed new Staff Attorney Three... Or Staff Attorney Two, I'm sorry for us, Alkevia Haynes. And she's coming from the State Attorney's Office, and she will start February 2nd. So when she comes, I will have her... We'll bring her around so she can meet you. And also, tonight was your first night. Remember, you had your work session on December 5th about the pilot program for public comment. And tonight was the first night that we went back to an open public comment period prior to your meeting, and then Agenda Public Comment is during thing. Moving on for the next board meeting, for January 30th, we will implement the online advanced registration components that you all directed staff to put together. We're essentially going to open up the online advanced registration seven days prior to the meeting. So the same time that we open, that we release the agenda, the online advanced registration will be available. And that way, it'll allow people to not have to rush here afterwards to get up in line. They can sign up online ahead of time. We also still will be offering the day of registration, and all that information will be posted on our website, probably tomorrow or Wednesday, or Thursday.
That's great. That's great news. Thank you so much. Is there anybody with a committee report? I will just say that on behalf as a legislative chair for OCPS, we are headed to Tallahassee tomorrow. So there's a group of us going up to Tallahassee to talk to our legislators about the issues that we are facing here at Orange County Public Schools. So we'll be up there this week advocating on behalf of all of you all. So thank you. So the last thing on the item to approve is Item 20.02, Request Approval for the Resolution Establishing the Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Advisory Committee. Are there any questions? Any comments? Any thoughts? Any discussion? I need a motion to approve? Move by Member Gould, second. By Member Byrd, all in favor? Any opposed? It carries unanimously with those present. Thank you so much. This means a lot to me, so thank you. Thank you, everybody that voted. Oh, I don't believe we have made that announcement. So I wanted to announce that our very own Member Felder is the chairperson of our Central Florida Coalition for School Boards Association. So we have a coalition of all the districts within I-4, and she was just elected as the chair in January. So we wish her much success, much luck. We know she's going to do a fabulous job. And now it's time for anything, any policy-level discussions that the School Board members would like to have. I believe Vicki, Member Felder, is going to go first, and then I'll call on Member Byrd.
Yes, thank you. Vicki, I hope you're there. Earlier than our pre-agenda, I had some members from Horace Academy come and share with the district about our scholarship fair. This particular fair is going to be held on January 24th at Jones High School, but it is a fair from 4:00 to 7:30. It is a scholarship fair open to every student in Orange County. We chose Jones. It's the center of the city. And we're hoping that students would come out. Dr. Martinez, who is the Chief of High Schools, he's going to make sure that the schools get it. And it was suggested by our own Scott Howitt that when we sent it out, that a minute of the schools, you can play it through your announcements. But I think Victor has a video to... I want to show you. If you could bring it up, Vic. Does he hear me? Yes, and that city near you is Orlando, Florida. So thank you so much, OCPS, for allowing that. And for those of you that are listening online and those of you that are here still in the auditorium, please encourage young people and parents to come. It's remarkable. Money is tight with everybody. And as Dr. Dorsey said earlier, that table, kitchen table talk about how are we going to pay for school? You want to go to school? Mom and Dad, we're doing the best we can. We don't have it. So this is an opportunity for every student in OCPS to take this opportunity to come. And you average it, they start at 2.5 and above. So please remember to come. It's going to be on the website, and the principals will have it. So I look forward to seeing you all on Wednesday, January 24th, from 4:30 to 7:30 at Jones High School on Rio Grande in Orlando. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Felder. That was awesome. Member Byrd?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to take a minute to share about something that took place over the winter break that was quite devastating to my local community, but ended up being one of these situations that makes you feel really good about your community. But our... The swimming and water polo coach at Wakava High School suffered a stroke while he was on vacation in the Dominican Republic over the break. And the family reached out because they were struggling getting the resources to get him back, because he was in such critical condition, a flight, medical flight, would cost significant amount of money. So they put together a GoFundMe account, and I'd say probably, I'd have to look, but I want to say it was within a week, that GoFundMe account raised $44,000. And they were able to get him home. And he's now here in Orlando, getting the treatment he needs. He's still in critical condition. There's still... He still has a long road ahead of him, but he is making progress. And this coach is just phenomenal. I mean, when you talk about the kind of coach you want for your child, this is the kind of coach you want for your child. He had a way of working with kids that just... He taught them what it meant to be a family. He was... He's very, very... That's a big part of what he does as a coach, is he teaches them that we are a family and we care about each other, and you do what's best for the family. It's not just about yourself. And, you know, I've seen him pull out the best player on the team and take a loss because that player wasn't playing for the team. So he's just a phenomenal human being. So we're all really thankful that he's home, where he can get the help he needs and the treatment he needs. But, and I'm really proud of our community and our kids, our sweet kids. We're posting all over Instagram. They got the USA Water Polo to repost about him. We got news stories out there. So I'm really proud of our kids and our community. And we wish Coach Markeith the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Byrd. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the Board? All right. See, no further business before the Board. We are adjourned. Have a great evening.